Call this meeting to order of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, January 11th, 2023. Item number eight, Public Information Notices as required under Notice by law 160-2022. The public has advised council's intention to adopt the following at its January 18th, 2022 meeting. Not applicable at this time. Blessing and Landing Management, councillor Van Hooft.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on 33 lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with Indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you councillor. Moving on the agenda, Declaration of Pecuniary Interest and the general nature thereof on today's agenda or from a meeting of which a member was not in attendance? See none. Item number C, Confirmation of Previous Committee Minutes. And there's a motion on the floor.
Resolution number one, your worship, moved by myself, signed by councillor Chase, that the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held December 5th, 2022, and the special committee of the whole meeting held December 29th, 2022 be preserved as written and filed.
Thank you. Any discussion? See none. Call the vote. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Moving on the agenda, D, Deputation. So we have, we actually have three. Excuse me. And the first one, we have a representative here, Stephen. And if I get the pronunciation wrong, I apologize. Duraco. He's from IMPACT or Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. And as you recall, this was brought up with council. This is actually part of our orientation and that. So we welcome Stephen and the floor is all yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your counsel and staff of Canora to give me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Stephen Duraco. We did get the pronunciation right. And I'm an account manager with Municipal Stakeholder Relations at Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. My background, I was actually, spent many years in information technology. I worked at Confederation College, moved over to Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. I've been there for 23, almost 24 years now. But most recently about eight years in the Municipal Stakeholder Relations Department. I do look forward to working with the council and mayor. And also I do work really with Canora staff. Anyway, whether you're newly elected or a seasoned official, my door is always open. I will have communication, email and phone numbers at the end of the presentation. Heather has information on that as well. I also will be sending some updated presentations that I couldn't include in this presentation. There are some videos, links that I couldn't get to work. That will be updated when I get back into Thunder Bay to my office. So to start off, at IMPACT, we are Ontario's property experts. Our job is to assess and classify more than 5.5 million properties across Ontario with a combined worth of more than $3 trillion. In the past year, Ontario has grown by approximately 45,000 new residential homes. And in 2022, we added $37 billion to Ontario's assessment rolls. Now, just for clarification, or just to narrow that down to Canora, we added 12 million to Canora's assessment roll last year. And that's actually a very high number. So just so you know, we do have people out even during the pandemic. We do have restrictions obviously, but still, but we have people in the community. We have an office here in Canora with IMPACT staff. Every municipality uses our assessments to make informed decisions about their community, including the distribution of property taxes. Ontario's property tax system and these assessments generate approximately $30 billion in tax revenue annually. Next slide please. There are four key players in Ontario's property assessment and taxation system. All have a different role and interest in this process. Sorry, can everyone see that? So we don't want to be in the way. So we'll start off with the provincial government and specifically the Ministry of Finance. They are responsible for setting assessment and taxation legislation as well as policies. They also determine the education property tax rate. There is also an independent body that adjudicates appeals of IMPACT's assessed values. That would be called the Assessment Review Board. They fall under the jurisdiction of the province, Tribunals, Ontario. IMPACT is an independent, not-for-profit corporation funded by all Ontario municipalities. Our role is to accurately assess and classify all properties in Ontario. We do this in compliance with the Assessment Act and regulations set by the government of Ontario. We are accountable to the province, municipalities and property taxpayers of Ontario through a board of directors that is comprised of provincial, municipal and taxpayer representatives, and these are all appointed by the Minister of Finance. Municipalities determine their budget requirements, set tax rates and collect property taxes to pay for municipal services such as police, fire, roads, recreation, water, among many other things. Municipalities use IMPACT's assessments and the established tax rates to distribute their tax requirements to their taxpayers. And finally, the property owners, they pay the property tax bill and help set the market value through ongoing property purchases and sales. Next slide. So maintaining Ontario's property database is very important to us. Property data is continuously updated so that municipal records are accurate when our municipal stakeholders are making important tax decisions. Maintaining Ontario's property database includes inspecting and assessing new construction, additions and renovations in a timely manner, responding to property owner inquiries and working to help them understand their assessments. We support municipality through our ongoing support, through me, the account manager and the other staff that work alongside me. We offer Municipal Connect. That's our application portal that municipal staff use to obtain the primary source of assessment-related information. We work collaboratively also on projects that are important municipalities like digital billing permit and digital plan submissions. These projects are also presented to, well, we have, we have a municipal liaison group that works closely with my department and they meet monthly. To represent the district of Canora, we have someone in Sioux Lookout, and in Rain River, we have someone from Atticokee. We do have important statutory duties such as handling requests for reconsideration and maintaining people data as well by tracking school supports for over five foot long building properties. Next slide. So monitoring the market and assessing newly built and renovated properties are things that we do every day to keep our property current. We also periodically update every single assessment in Ontario based on a legislated valuation date. I'll get into more of that later. We call this an assessment update or a reassessment. The valuation date for the most recent assessment update that took place in 2017, that assessment date is January 1st, 2016. So this is when we determined what every single property in Ontario could have sold for, or reasonably sold for, in its current state and condition at a particular time. And that time is January 1st, 2016. So regular revaluation of properties ensures that assessments stay up to date and similar properties of similar value in the same municipality pay similar taxes. Provincial legislation determines when IMPACT conducts each province-wide assessment update and sets the valuation date for each update cycle. Next slide please. So the reassessment that was scheduled to occur in 2020 was postponed by the province. And I'll use their words, it was to provide stability and certainty to Ontarians and to enable municipalities to focus on responding to the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. That was the Ministry of Finance and Doug Ford. As a result, property assessments continue to be based on the legislated value of January 1st, 2016. This should not have a negative financial impact on municipalities as IMPACT continues to maintain and update the assessment role to reflect changes such as new construction and improvements to property. However, so your question will probably be, if I built a new property, how would it be assessed? And we would say, well, what would that sell for on January 1st, 2016, even a new building built here today, whether it's commercial, industrial or residential? Until we get that new valuation date, that's when it'll be based on. Next slide. Ontario's property tax system is based on everyone paying their portion of what it costs to deliver community services. To do this, all properties are assigned a value at a common valuation date, as noted in the prior slide. This principle is called current value assessment or CVA. This is the price a property might reasonably be expected to sell for if sold by a willing seller to a willing buyer after appropriate time and exposure on an open market. We collect, we do a rigorous sales analysis for every property that is sold. There's probably over 24 codes for different sales, different types of sales. So next slide please. So talking about the assessment update, just to reiterate, IMPACT awaits news from the provincial government, the Ministry of Finance, about the next province-wide assessment update. So January 1st, 2016 does continue to be our Ontario's legislative valuation date. As noted earlier, this is a fixed date to which all properties are valued. Although the assessment date remains paused, our work continues to keep property assessment data up to date. Property owners will still receive notices from IMPACT if there are changes to their properties. In November, for example, IMPACT sent out 800,000 notices to reflect changes in properties. Once the province announces when the next assessment date will take place and what the valuation date will be, we will let you know. We can then work to have meaningful conversations as we work to finalize assessed values within your community. Next slide. So this is just an example of what a assessment cycle looks like. This slide explains what happens when there is an assessment update call. It shows the link between a chosen valuation date, the mailing of IMPACT property assessment notices, and the phase-in, which is bringing the new assessed value of a property into effect over a period of time. The phase-in program was introduced by the province to provide an additional level of property tax stability and predictability. When properties experience a market increase, the assessed value is phased in over a period of four years. Any assessment decreases are realized in year one of the assessment. Next slide. We talked about valuation now. There are five major factors to valuation. So when we're looking at the valuation of residential home, for example, although our analysis tool considers over 200 factors and data points, the above five make up the approximately 85% of a typical home's value. So these include location, lot dimensions, exterior square footage, quality of construction and the age of the property. Now, the age of the property does get adjusted for any major renovations that have occurred. We call this effective age after. Next slide. So in Ontario, there are three industry-wide standardized approaches to valuing properties. The first of these approaches is the direct comparison approach. And this valuation approach is used primarily for residential properties, condos and vacant With this approach, we analyze recent sales of comparable properties that are sold for a similar or identical use as the property to be valued to provide an indication of value. It's also important that only valid open market transactions are used in this analysis. Next slide. Next, we're going to talk about the income approach. The income approach is used for large medical or dental buildings, office buildings, shopping centers, large sports stadiums and industrial malls. In income-producing properties, the ability to earn revenue is directly tied to its current value. To be clear, we determine how much revenue it could generate as well as the sale price. So it's not just, it's not the actual revenue being generated by the occupant, but rather the rent that the occupant is paying to the landlord that we use to value properties using the income approach. This method requires a detailed analysis of the income expenses, both for the property being valued and other similar properties. So we do rely on the input of property owners who own these large buildings to fill out what we call a peer report. And that, that way we can continue with the valuation, a more accurate valuation. These two factors create capitalization rate, or what's better known as the cap rate, that helps determine, helps us determine the property's assessed value. So lastly, we have, oh, sorry, next slide. Lastly, we have the cost approach. A cost approach is typically used for the general purpose industrial properties, small retail, gravel pits, warehousing, paper mills, pulp mills and mines. This approach is used when a property type is unique and rarely sold on the open market as we cannot rely on either a direct comparison or the income approaches to come up with a value. It's just about lack of data pretty much. So we first calculate the cost of replacing buildings, structures or other accessible fixtures on the land. Then we apply a reduction for depreciation on all structures due to age as well as any functional or economic adjustment if there are conditions impacting the value of that property. So these are also known as functional obsolescence or economic obsolescence. Finally, we determine the value of the land added to the building calculations to produce an overall valuation. Next slide please. So what draws our attention to a property is typically one of the following things. It's a market sale, a request from a municipality or a property owner, a building permit, a building permit activity, or a request for reconsideration or an appeal. IMPACT's role is to take building permits and plans and turn them into assessment. Our municipal stakeholders rely on IMPACT assessments to deliver property tax. The sooner IMPACT can deliver an assessment, the sooner our municipal and stakeholder relations, stakeholders, sorry, can realize new revenue. So it's important that we have a good relationship with a building apartment, for example. The sooner we get, you know, permits into our system and the sooner we get to view plans, the faster we can actually get that assessment added to the roll, which is, which benefits everyone in the equation. Yeah, so every year IMPACT processes an average of 300,000 building permits for new development or renovations. In fact, we actually, IMPACT is the only organization with a dataset of all building permits in Ontario. Our understanding of this data gives us a deep perspective on ways to modernize its collection in exchange to support our municipal partners. So just some insights based on some of the data we've captured. In 2021, Ontario saw more than 48,000 new residential homes constructed with just under 50% being detached homes. Condos are getting smaller, but detached homes are getting bigger. Ontario condominiums are 35% smaller on average than they were 25 years ago, while the average detached home is 25% larger. In the 90s, the average condo in Ontario peaked at approximately 1,100 square feet. In the most recent IMPACT data shows that condo, the average condo today is about 700 square feet. In comparison to single-family detached homes, home was approximately 2,000 square feet in the 90s and now typically, typical single-family homes around 2,500 square feet. Next slide please. So after we, after we assess a property or change an assessment, we mail the property owner a property assessment notice. Sometimes property owners do not agree with our assessed value. So a property owner might connect with a council member or, or a municipal staff. In that case, what we, I think of an important direction is to direct the property owner to aboutmyproperty.ca. It has a wealth of information about it, about their property and other comparable properties. But I think it's also important that a property owner asks themselves, one of these, one of the four questions, or actually all of these. Number one, could they have sold their property on January 1st, 2016 for that assessed value? Number two, have they visited About My Property to review the information IMPACT has on file regarding their property to ensure it's correct? Sometimes it's, it's just as easy as having the wrong score footage or having certain structures that aren't there anymore updated. Number three, have they used About My Property to conduct comparable research on assessment values in their area? It's very easy. They can actually click on comparable properties in their neighborhood or close to them to see what their actual sale value was without getting too much personal information involved, obviously. We do follow federal rules. And number four, if a property owner still disagrees with their assessment, they have the option to file their request for reconsideration and we will review it free of charge. There is also the ability to file an appeal with the Assessment Review Board, but a property owner, residential property owner must go through the RFR process first in order to get to the appeals process. So the fastest way to start a review is by filing an RFR on About My Property. You can do it through our website or we actually can go to IMPACT.ca and do that. And there is also other contact information on IMPACT.ca. You don't have to do it through the web. You can actually give our call center a call. Next slide please. Just want to spend a moment to address the relationship between property taxes and assessment. Assessments distribute taxes, they do not determine taxes paid. When a province-wide assessment update does occur, the most important factor is not how much the assessed value of a property has changed, but rather how the assessed value has changed relative to the average change in class in that community. So this concept is explained in a recent toolkit that we did share with municipalities. Next slide please. Just more on that, in anticipation of the next province-wide assessment update, we have implemented a strategy to address misconceptions about the relationships between assessed value and taxation. So this includes resources for municipalities that will ensure when an announcement is made, we're ready to support you. There is a digital toolkit available at IMPACT.ca. Municipalities can go to, including elected officials, to mitigate misinformation to provide and to provide support and resources to educate and inform property owners. This digital toolkit, there's all, includes this video, which I couldn't play today. I wish I could. It's this one right here, but that is on our website and like I said, I'll be sending an updated link to that and many other videos. We actually have our own YouTube page where there's these very short and simple videos explaining taxation and assessment. Okay. The next slide please. I hope it didn't go too quickly. I appreciate having you here today. If you want to stay connected, my, like I said, on the next slide, our next couple slides, sorry, the last slide, we will have, oh, this video is here. This is, you might be able to click on it. I'm not sure if that'll work.
What if a browser was up to date? Yeah, I'm thinking not. Let me just see if I can, no.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Didn't we see this one?
I don't know.
Like I said, we do have, we have an entire YouTube channel full of videos. While Heather tries to get that to work, I just want to say, I just appreciate having you here today. Reach out to me at any time if you have any questions or looking for any of these other resources.
I don't think so. I'm just trying to get it from here.
Yep.
I don't know. What is it? See if I can get it all that way. No. Okay.
Well, thank you, Stephen. So I'm, I'm gonna allow council to, because I'm sure there's questions that want to be asked. So I'll open it up and I'll start over here with councillor Chase.
Thank you, your worship. Hi, Stephen. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of really quick questions. Using square footage as one of your measurements for value, does that also include developed square footage that's below grade? Like how do you, when you're analyzing an exterior measure of a property and getting square footage, how do you know if it's got a finished basement, for example, or not? Is that factored into, into your evaluation?
It is. A finished basement is, it doesn't, it doesn't carry the same weight as the main floor or a second floor, for example, but finished basements are part of the calculation. Yes, they are. It also depends on, you know, I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but it depends on the type of building, if it's commercial, industrial or residential.
So, so in like a single-family detached residential home that's built slab-on-grade, how do you know if it has a basement or not?
We have inspected, we would have inspected it.
Okay.
Yeah, so every building permit, when we have a building permit, it does trigger an inspection.
Okay.
So when our inspector goes there, we, we, we don't just measure, we'll get in and also if we can't get the plans, it's kind of hard to get the plans, but a lot of, a lot of modern plans now are in digital format. So that also gives us a heads up. But we, we try to, we will, we have to get to a new property.
Okay. And then one other quick question, if I may. Thank you. How do you know or define when you say like a sale is open market? When, when something is transacted and you see a trade in land titles, for example, how, do you search MLS? Do you search real estate board? Do you try to find out from local realtors? I'm just curious because, and in full disclosure, I'm a Realtor. So I, I know when things transact privately, they still show up as a sale on land titles. And if you don't know how it transacted, I'm just curious how you know if it's open market or not.
True. Well, we do contact a property owner. We have, we have, we do a sales investigation. So each, each sale is investigated by a property inspector or a valuation expert. So we have, like I said, we have many codes for a sale. Like we have to, we have to put that code up.
Yeah.
We have to get that information. So we're mandated to collect all that information and then we decide, is that a forced sale, you know, a estate sale? We do have a lot of codes to, to represent that. And, and that's very important for our analysis, right? So we wouldn't take a $2 sale or channels, depending what channels we're included in the sale. But we do have a questionnaire and we do contact a property owner to see what transacted.
Okay. Thank you, Thelma. Those were my questions.
Councillor Van Hooft.
Thank you, your worship. Is there any communication around a timeframe for the new valuation date? I know that's all your job to know, but I'm wondering if you have it.
Well, that's super tricky. You know, I was hoping to actually announce that on this, these set of presentations that I'm doing throughout Northwest Ontario, but we don't have that yet. So I thought they might have announced it back in fall, at the Fall Economic Statement. I was sort of waiting for it then. But we're sort of still waiting for the Ministry of Finance and the government to announce when that's going to be. We have no clue. So it is tricky on our end because we do prepare for it. We prepare for multiple valuation dates. We have two modelers, statisticians in Thunder Bay who are constantly drawing up different models based on the sales and, you know, waterfront model, residential model, commercial models, land models, just all, they all have to be calculated based on different valuation dates and what set of sales we're going to include, right? So we have, now we have a very large database of sales and years of sales. So hopefully that will make our assessments even better, right? Because sales is key to making that analysis. But I really wish I had more information on that, that I could share, but hopefully, hopefully we're looking at 2024 for a delivery of the new assessment. And the valuation date may be January 1st, 2023 or January 1st, 2022. But I can't say for sure. I would, you know, I don't think that's fair for me to speculate.
Thank you.
Councillor Moncrief, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Councillor Mancin? No?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
No?
I have one question. So if we're going back to January 1st, 16 was the last, or 2016, does that mean we're basically looking at two cycles by the time we get to, like, to the end of 2022? That would be eight years?
It's a long time, yes. Yep. Yeah, so the pandemic really, really put things, set things back. And, you know, the good news is we were collecting data. So we do have a lot of those years throughout those assessment cycles, or this one is giant assessment cycle. So everything, the good news, everything's phased in. It gave us time to catch up on appeals as well, because there was an appeal backlog with Tribunals Ontario, the Assessment Review Board. So that's also good news. But yes, it is roughly, you know, you're looking at about almost two full assessment cycles worth of, worth of time.
Yeah. And my other question or point, I guess, it's almost like the perfect storm because, you know, with inflation, obviously municipality costs are just, they're skyrocketing in all kinds of different areas out of our control. And then we're going to have this huge increase in assessment unless the market goes the other way. But I'm assuming right now it looks like it's gone up considerably. That's a perfect storm for people banging our door down here complaining about increased taxes, because there's always winners and losers when assessment goes up. You know, when you do your calculations. That could be, I'm just wondering if that's going to be problematic right across the province. Not just isolated to Canora, but right across Ontario.
For sure. And that's why I did mention we have, we do have a strategy to mitigate any sort of misinformation that is out there because, you know, and this is for, for all of Ontarians. This is not just for min staff or mayor and council. We're going to try and do an outreach for all people in Ontario, whether it be prints or news or social media. It's important for everyone to understand that just because your assessment is going up, it doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up. And I think that's a very important message. As long as, you know, when taxes, when assessments go up altogether, it's basically you're still going to be paying whatever the municipality needs to fulfill their budget, right? So it doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes are going to go up just because your assessment went up. So, and you're right, it does pose a challenge with, you know, with all the latest data that we've had over the last few years and sales going up, right? So I understand your concern and hopefully our new strategy will address that. But we do want to educate all Ontarians and that's why, you know, you don't want to see an influx of people coming here complaining about their assessments, right? So we'll have that on AboutMyProperty.ca, we'll have social media, print media. And I'm not too sure where we are on pamphlets. We did have at one time, we did have pamphlets available in every municipality for different property types. And I will, I told Red Lake this the other night, but I will check back with AMPAC on what sort of information, resources we have that we can keep at the local municipality level.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. And no other questions then? So, well, thank you very much, Stephen, for attending and sharing lots of valuable information there.
Yeah, and if anyone else has any feedback or questions, just email me directly. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on the agenda, our next deputation is Dave Schwartz, and he's gonna talk about Old Miller Rapids Road and the urban trail system. So welcome, Dave.
Well, thank you very much. Happy New Year, everybody. One thing I always like about coming to council, and I've been here a few times before, is the nice congenial atmosphere in the place. No personal attacks, no diatribe. It's, it's really fun. Anyway, twelve new counselors, congratulations. And Mr. Mayor as well, congratulations on your recent election and I wish you every success. And I also thank you for your willingness to devote a lot of time and energy and talent to, to your role. Anyway, my name, my name is Dave Schwartz. I'm a youth physics teacher. Some of my other roles are generally since at large and just sort of lost causes. In terms of other roles that I've filled, I'm a member of the, well, a previous member of the previous environmental commission or committee, actually, and, and the Trails Committee as well. And a lot of my efforts recently have centered around trying to make Canora a better place to live. Anyway, my purpose here today is to highlight what I see is a very time-sensitive opportunity. As you all know, Canora Urban Trail System, which had its start about 20 years ago through, through health concerns. The original purpose of the trails was to develop opportunities for people to get out and walk and get healthier because the general health of the population was deemed at the time to be, in short, abysmal. Anyway, the trail system has dramatically improved like in Canora. No small thanks to Counselor Manson, who had a key role in all of that and was a driving force behind the development of the trails. Anyway, the Old Miller Rapids Road would be an excellent addition to our present urban trails network and would serve an area of the city which is slated for commercial and residential growth. I'm used to pointing at stuff in my previous career, pointing at stuff with a meter stick, which also helps to make sure attendees were attending or attentive. Incorporating the Old Miller Rapids Road at the urban trails system would facilitate immediate links to the present trails network and there'd be a long-term potential for further connections. I wouldn't see this happening anytime soon. The immediate connection, the immediate concern is this, securing its future in the trails network. In the long term, there'd be a potential for a pedestrian bridge across the Oakford Island and another bridge over to connect to the Turtle Island. That, that would be a long-term dream. Fair bit of money involved in that. But interestingly, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan indicates extremely strong public support for the trails network and the willingness of the public to see more money spent on parks and trails. The Parks and Recreation Plan also recommends expanding the present trails network. Okay, securing this part of the trail would open the, open the opportunity to connect to the Rabbit Lake Trails and potential future trails through this property, now over toward McCullough Park. And it was also a very easy connection to the trails network through the streets. Next slide, please. That's just a different look at the, at the, at the area. Exactly the same issues. Okay, we can leave that up.
You want the other one back up?
Doesn't matter. It's all good. The proposed trail has some really positive features. Number one, it's already there. Don't need to do anything. Maybe a little surface improvement, some signage. There's 900 meters of beautiful riverside scenery. The flat topography is wheelchair accessible for the entire length. Tree canopy, something that's mentioned in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is that Canora is very lacking in tree canopy. The trail already has it. Along richly the entire length. This trail would fill a gap in an area where there are no formal trails and very little in the way of parks. It's bikeable. In fact, it's actually part of the present bike trails network. Not too many people know that, but it's on the BikeWoods map. And as a bonus feature, there's potential for parking at either end. There is already parking up here and some parking down here. This section of the trail should be easy and secure. It's very tight between the Veterans Drive and the, and the water, so there's not much room to do anything else with it. Park possibilities. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan indicates a shortage of neighborhood parks in Canora. We have about half the recommended amount of neighborhood parks that's generally recommended. There'd be an opportunity, maybe, would you go back to the previous slide, please? There's a potential park site here. There's a little bit of potential for it. There's a wee little spot there that would make a wonderful pocket park. Anyway, that's all good. But there's a fly in the ointment. The property is all privately owned. And again, in the, in the master plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it addresses that. And there, the ideal solution, of course, would be to bring the appropriate property into the, into the public domain. And according to the master plan, that can be achieved through land dedication, direct purchase by the city, land swaps, donations and gifts. And note once again that the public opinion does support the increased spending on parks. And then a backup plan, if acquisition of the property were to fail, securing the rights of public access to that trail section would be the logical backup plan. Anyway, solving that all is above my pay grade. So I'll leave that in your capable hands. One thing I would recommend is that discussion related to the trails and park opportunities should be initiated with the property owners as soon as possible to get that going, because it's an opportunity that I think is a wonderful opportunity, but if we lose it now, it's probably gone forever. Anyway, going back to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, its goal is to optimize places, spaces and services. And pulling this off would definitely be a step in the right direction. Thank you very much for your attention. Open questions?
Questions of council?
Oh, there were more pictures. As you can see, it's a beautiful setting. The tree canopy there. The old road bed is chip sealed, which is gradually falling apart. Could be touched up. Same trail in winter. Gotta be the most beautiful sight in the universe for a sewage treatment plant. Yeah, next, another, another shot of the river. Another shot. And bridges, we all love them. People really like bridges over water and they'll go stand on them and glock, really enjoy them. So that's part of what I would see as the long-term dream. And another bridge. Other countries do them, other communities do them. And it's just a wonderful place to go and observe nature. So photograph for the sake of a photograph. I don't know. Okay, this time I'm done.
So no questions then? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Manson?
Just a comment. Thanks, Dave, for continuing to promote trail development and great presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Moncrief, do you have any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you very much, Dave. And I enjoyed our, I think it was myself and Stace that went with you back in November before the storm. Or in October. And it was, I mean, I didn't realize that was there. I mean, it was this hidden gem. So it's amazing and the wildlife there and like the trees and just the river as its background and that, it was, it was actually amazing. I'm a rotary trail person, that's as far as I go. So it was, it was nice to, it was nice to see that and I appreciate that opportunity to walk up with you. We'll leave it with us and we'll see what we can do here.
Yeah, I appreciated the fact that several of you were able to make it out and view it firsthand. Far, by the way, you're here to wait over the day.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, deputations and that, we have Jill Hager. Welcome, Jill.
Thank you. Myself, I've also presented before councils before and I have to echo Mr. Schwartz's statements about the, the atmosphere. I do appreciate councils accommodating me today. I understand they're informing that some of the processes have changed recently, so I do appreciate you kind of tagging me as an add-on. So I guess I'll just sort of dive into it. I just wanted to come and talk about some of the concerns around the public skating in the community of Canora, specifically the cancellation of the public skate in Kuwaiten. I'm a lifelong resident of Canora. I've lived here my whole life. I have two school-aged children, age four and six. And for as long as I can remember, there's been a public skate available in Kuwaiten on Wednesday nights from 6:00 to 7:30, which was always, in my experience, very well-attended. I attended the skate regularly with my eldest child when I learned to talk her how to skate independently myself. It was good physical exercise and a social outing in the dead of winter for our family. We would go as a whole, sometimes, you know, aunts and uncles and grandparents would tag along. Flash forward to this ice season and there are no regularly scheduled public skates available for families of school-aged children to attend. I do have the schedule here, but I'll get to that later. So as a result, I and other families lack opportunities to teach our own children how to skate. Personally, I have resorted to enrolling my youngest child, age four, in the skating academy and can skate programs, which come with a significant cost. So it's approximately $124 for 10 weeks of half-hour lessons plus taxes and a one-time $50 administration fee. So we're looking at close to $190. I'm fortunate enough to be able to afford the cost so my child can learn to skate and participate in a leisure activity, albeit separately from the rest of our family. participate in a leisure activity, albeit separately from the rest of our family and for only a short duration of time. I have encountered numerous other community members who regularly attended that Kuwaiton public skate that are upset that the city chose, has chosen to eliminate the weekday evening public skating option. In reviewing the online arena schedules for the remainder of the 2022-2023 season, it's evident that that ice time, the 6:00 to 7:30 time slot in Kuwaiton, has been absorbed by minor hockey programs, organized minor hockey programs. So currently, this is the flyer that I picked up at the rec center on Monday. So there is public skating from 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays, again, and then Fridays at 1:00 to 2:30. School-aged children cannot attend these. There is a Sunday public skate from 12:00 to 3:00. However, it does note that subjects, you know, subject to change without notice, of course. So I took a look online at the arena schedule for the remainder of the ice from this year, from January 1st to ice out. There's only actually three public skates, so I think it's a bit of a disservice to our community to say that we have a scheduled public skate when we in fact don't. Those are on February 26th, March 5th and March 19th. The remaining 12 Sundays between January and ice out are canceled due to youth tournaments, adult tournaments and other special events, which again, so these skates are not accessible to, Tuesday, Thursday is not accessible to school-aged children. In addition, the tourism Kenora campaign highlights the arenas and skating as a destination and even lists the Kuwaiton public skate as a destination, but there absolutely is no option for a skate in Kuwaiton. And as a visitor to this community, I do feel there is a lack of actual skating options if that's what we're advertising as a tourist community. Transportation in our community is a known barrier. There is in fact no bus services on Sundays for those lacking transportation to attend a public skate at the Kenora Arena on a Sunday. There's also access to neighborhood rinks is important. Over the years, we have a community that's lost, lost an outdoor rink in Norman, what was once JM. Central is under construction and I noted that they don't have a ice surface under the white cap this season, which I mean, obviously, it's been a poor season for making ice, which is a whole nother issue with the outdoor ice. So this leaves Evergreen and Rideout, Rideout of which is used three evenings a week for local adult brimbo leagues, so that does limit accessibility for school-aged kids to use it. And on these ice surfaces, it's been my experience that it's predominantly taken up by hockey, making it near impossible for a beginner or others to enjoy skating without actually participating in hockey. And like, I do love playing hockey myself, but this is outside of that. As much as I love hockey, it's like, we're not just hockey. So anyway, irregular skating, the irregular Sunday public skating is not equitable or accessible. Families are out taking advantage of what our community has to offer and spending time as a family. We do have lots of other, you know, there's special events and different things going on and it's sort of smack dab in the middle of the day. My family did attend some of the Sunday skates in the fall, but we found that quite frequently it was cut short or canceled at short notice and we were having to call every time just to confirm that it was in fact happening. So we couldn't really plan to have it, you know, then it's like, okay, what's our backup plan? The Kuwaiton public skate was affordable for families and was offered in a safe and controlled environment compared to the outdoor rinks. The ice quality is there, there's, you know, it's just safer, it's warmer, there's so many different factors. And I think it needs to be noted that this city is more than just hockey. I feel like there's such a focus on the hockey, but we are more than that and there needs to be other recreational opportunities need to reflect that. Mr. Schwartz spoke of the Parks and Recreation Plan and I'm going to highlight some of the things that I wanted to draw attention to around the arenas. So there were three guiding principles in the, the master plan that stood out to me and that was the equity and inclusion, accessibility and affordability. So canceling the weekday public skate time goes against each of those three principles. We received information from the city staff advising that weekday ice demands from user groups, from youth groups has increased with hockey being the, the main consumer. However, the master plan indicates that participation in boys' minor hockey is on a slight decline and there's only a slight increase in girls' programming. So I was guessing that would be a net zero of increase in youth. Ice hockey is a significant financial barrier sport, whereas public skating is a far more affordable and accessible activity for a broader portion of our community population. I have frequently arrived at the arena for a 9:00 to 10:00 p.m. ice time to find the arena empty or not in use for the 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. time slot or very minimally used, having only like five or six youth on the ice with no coach or anything. Priority of ice time continues to be provided to longstanding private user groups to the detriment of the general public. The city needs to provide direction to ice user groups to encourage efficiencies in the use of ice time. I would call for a review and revamp of the ice allocation policy to better align with the goals of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As outlined in the master plan, youth activities, this is a direct quote from it, "Youth activity preferences have been shifting over time towards individual pursuits and unstructured sporting activities. Municipalities have been focusing on providing expanded drop-in activities to better accommodate youth and adults that lack interest or ability to participate in organized or competitive leagues." The current allocation of ice time and cancellation of public skating does not reflect these statements in the master plan document. There have been very recent and sometimes heated discussions in our community around mental health, substance misuse and the related safety concerns in our community. There needs to be some concerted efforts to address the social destriments of health as a community. We need to start putting in some, putting in place some upstream measures, so to speak, in an effort to prevent some of these issues before they spiral into a greater community issue. There needs to be support for accessible, lower-cost, safe, reliable recreational opportunities for the families and youth in our community. So in my opinion, our city should be enhancing positive recreational leisure opportunities, not eliminating them, such as this, the public skate. And I guess my final remark is like, this council has voted in on the commitment to improve our community for the young working families that continue to choose and live here and make Kenora their home. And eliminating the weekday evening skate does not align with that and it does not align with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, specifically those, and like specifically those in the neighborhood of Kuwaiton. So I guess my ask to this council is to immediately reinstate the Wednesday evening public skates at the Kuwaiton Arena. And then I have a long-term ask to see a redevelopment of the ice allocation policies. Sorry, Stace, I know you've heard me bang this drum before.
Don't you last time?
To see a redevelopment of the ice allocation policies, procedures and costing to better align with the information goals and guiding principles outlined in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and in conjunction to see city-led development of administrative practices to promote efficiencies within the various ice user groups in order to maximize the limited resources and recreational resources that we have for all of our users, not just hockey. Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to some questions, but first, if you can ensure that we got a copy of that, or to the city card?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So I'm gonna open up the floor to questions. Oh, Counselor Moncrief? Go ahead.
There she goes. Oh.
Oh.
Hold on. We were working, so she was fine.
Is she on mute?
Yeah, she's on mute. And we, and we tested this earlier too and it worked fine, so it's not on my end. Can't hear you, yeah. I can try. She's, can you type it in, Counselor Moncrief? And I'll pull up here at the chat.
Ask her to try again, because it almost sounded like we could hear her.
Well, we did before.
And we heard her earlier. We tested it.
The last few words she said, I thought we heard.
Okay, so she said skip. Counselor Moncrief, if you want to send me an email, I can read it out for you. If you want to send it an email.
I can get her on FaceTime audio and play it in.
Sure.
It's good. Yeah, we can hear you. I'll put it through my mic here. Go ahead.
Okay, hi Jill, I just wanted to say thanks for coming and I appreciate you speaking on behalf of people who have financial barriers to access recreation. And independent, unstructured recreation is the trend. And us paying for studies, purchasing studies that sit on a shelf and aren't used to actually direct how we do business is unfortunate. So I would hope that in planning, the staff take those studies into account. My question is more maybe for Stace. How far in advance are these schedules made and is there any flexibility?
Lisa, if I could, Counselor Moncrief, I apologize. Stace is no longer in charge of the recreation area. We have a new general manager that started and I would like to have a conversation with them and could we maybe come back and provide some more information on that at a subsequent meeting because some of the things that Jill has spoke to today are currently underway. And so I would like to just take the time to go back. This is the first that I've learned of this issue. So I'd like to just take this away and if we could come back in February, I'd appreciate the opportunity.
Sure, that's great. And I, if that satisfies Jill. I, I know Sunday I was at the arena and I saw people come in with skates for public skating when there was a hockey tournament. So it is happening, it is happening.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Moncrief. Any other questions of Counselor Manson?
I just want to say I grew up in West Bay, Kuwaiton, in a very poor neighborhood, I would say. And the only thing we had to do was go to the rink for a fee that our family could afford. So I commend you for coming to council and letting us know about this. Thanks.
Any other questions of council? No? Thanks for the information, Jill. I think a lot of us were surprised, I was when I heard that. So we'll leave it with us.
Perfect, thank you.
You have a second calling if need be.
Solving problems.
So moving on the agenda, under item number one, administration, we have several reports. The first one is 1.1, it's the 2023 conference attendance. Heather, would you like to speak to that or?
Sure, I can lead the discussion. This report is the opportunity to allow council to have a wholesome discussion just on which conferences they plan to attend or have the interest in and that allows administration to ensure that we have efficient registration in advance at those conferences. So some of you may have received a confirmation yesterday for AMO registration and simply just to put names on rooms, it's not to say, but the, literally the registration's open for those rooms, hotel rooms at conferences and they're sold out within minutes. So we were only able to get three rooms at the conference hotel and that was with, I had three staff trying to, at the same time at nine o'clock when the rooms opened. So it is a, it's a free come, free serve and they go really quick. So this discussion is just really to allow us to register everybody. If things change later on, that's fine. It's just, this is kind of gives us advance warning who wants to go. So if we want to start with, obviously Roma is pretty secured unless something significant changes. Those, those attendees are set 2 and 10 next week, two weeks, sorry. Next one is Federation of Canadian Municipalities Sustainability Communities Conference. It's in Ottawa, February 7th, 8th, 9th and 10th. This isn't something that many have attended in the past, but it is an option available.
Is it a fairly new conference though? I mean, it hasn't been around for.
Yeah, and I think it was only occurring every second year. Any interest in that one? And I'll.
It's, it doesn't work with my schedule. I am interested in this. Is there any sort of online or virtual options for any of these?
I can look into it for you.
Yeah, that would be great. Just.
I don't know that for sure, but I can have a look. Okay, and I'll follow up with Counselor, Counselor Moncrief will let us know, but I'll follow up with Counselor Bernie as well if there's interest. Okay, the next one is the Rainy Lake of the Woods Watershed Forum, which is in International Falls, March 8th and 9th. Counselor McMillan used to attend fairly regularly and we haven't had anyone there for quite a few years.
Let me check my schedule and that because I talked to Rory about that. He, he believes it's valuable for someone to be there, so, and I don't think it's happened in the last few years because of COVID and the restrictions at the borders. So leave that with me and if we feel it's something that someone should attend, I think we should continue to do that.
No other interest from council. All right, the next one is Ontario Good Roads Association in Toronto, April 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th. And Marko, to your knowledge, nobody's attending from staff at this time. Right?
Shouldn't? Like, I, I think that particular conference is of benefit. Is it, no one wants to go or no one's been asked?
So there's been a request go up and, and yeah, staff have not taken the opportunity to attend.
So if members of council are going, we will, we will discuss that at SLT again because it is important to have administration there to support council. So we will talk about that at SLT.
Yeah, it is.
Someone will be going.
Yeah, there's a heavy reliance on, and a lot of the forums are tied to, are as good information for staff, at least they used to be.
Okay, so I'll take that away. The next one is NOMA, so Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association in Thunder Bay, April 26th, 27th, 28th. So far, I've heard from Mayor Poirier and Counselor Koc that are, do intend, intend to attend.
So I'm just gonna put a little plug in here. I think in the past we've tried and again, you know, it's based on people's schedule, but supporting these more district and regional organizations and that is, is very important and that, so if there are other counselors that feel they can put the time aside to go and that, I think a presence there is, is beneficial and it's noticed. And we can't support these by not going to conferences and we need to keep these organizations as advocates and especially NOMA because the next leg after that is AMO. Whatever's decided at NOMA goes to the AMO board table and that, and we get a voice there. So just throwing that in there, and again, it's, it's always based on availability, time availability of individuals, so, but if we could get a good contingent, it'd be good.
Counselor Devlin, okay. And I'll check with Counselor Bernie as well. Counselor Moncrief, is, is NOMA of interest to you? I know I can't hear her.
She said I could go.
Oh, she can go, sorry, I didn't see that. You can go?
I'm reading your lips.
Okay. Okay, she will go, I think is what you said.
She said she could go. I don't know if she said she can go.
Okay, I will talk to her about that offline. Next one is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, in Toronto, May 25th, 6th and 7th and 8th. This is a very, very, very big conference.
It's a what?
Very, very big conference. It's just because it's FCM rather than all Ontario, so you, you know, have people from across the country.
Buddy.
Well, I, I gotta, I gotta see that because I, I don't want to be in Toronto for the next 48 months and that. There's things we can accomplish here, so I, again, I'll look at schedule and stuff, but yeah, and I'd like to see the, because I know in the past, the agenda and that, it was actually a very good conference and I know people have attended in the, in the past and they've come back raving about it. So it is a good conference and that, but again, it's four days in Toronto, so it turns into five, five days or five and a half days or whatever, so.
Put me down, I'm gonna. Okay, next is AMO, final conference. Okay, next is EMO, uh, final conference for the year. Uh, just noting that KDMA will be announced at some point, uh, in the next few months here. Normally that conference is held in February, but it was deferred due to the election. And the, uh, administrator resigned, so there's a vacancy there. So once we know that, that's local anyway, it'll be, it's supposed to be in Dryden. Um, Counselor Koch. So EMO, I have Mayor Andrew Poirier and Counselor Moncrief.
What's the dates and where?
Uh, EMO is August 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd in London. They usually rotate that conference between London and Ottawa. Okay, so I just have those two for now. All right.
Any questions of council? Okay. You okay there?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
What you need. Okay, moving on the agenda, uh, the next item is Bill Five Advocacy Support. Uh, we have a, we had a report attached that, uh, individuals were able to read. Uh, who's going to?
That's my report. Is there any discussion on, um, that's an advocacy report, uh, in support of Bill Five. So you will see these coming forward from time to time. Um, often I'll receive other municipalities that are advocating for similar issues. And sometimes, um, you know, if there's, uh, from council, if there's something that you see, um, that's been introduced that you particularly wish something to be included, um, which did come to me from a couple of counselors asking for this advocacy to come before our council. So that's why that's here today.
No, I think it's a good thing. Any questions of? Counselor Pendleton?
I don't have any questions.
Or comments?
Sorry, I just wanted to make the comment, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you to Counselor Koch for bringing this to our attention. This is really important legislation to make sure that us at this table are held to the same standards as everyone else when it comes to workplace and harassment safety. Um, a 90-day vacating of seat is not appropriate when, um, there is serious misconduct at this table. So thank you, Counselor Koch, for bringing this to our attention. This is really important to advocate for and hopefully the province will pass this. There's bipartisan support, so.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on the agenda, 1.3, uh, Community Safety and Wellbeing Coordinator Position?
That's Roberto.
Roberta?
Okay. So the purpose of this report is to seek council approval to increase the City of Canora's staff complement and operating budget by 1 FTE for the purpose of Community Safety Wellbeing Coordinator, uh, which is at the, uh, appropriate salary of 87, 617. Um, and also to include an operating budget of $75,000 for the 2023 budget. Uh, effective January 1 of 2019, the province of Ontario mandated the development and implementation of community safety and wellbeing planning under Police Services Act. It's important to note that the City of Canora, uh, had, was ahead of the game in 2015 and actually had launched a committee, uh, that was working, uh, towards community safety. Uh, we all recognize that community safety and wellbeing, uh, planning, recognize that, uh, we recognize that it's a complex issue and results requires multiple stakeholder consultation and support, uh, by multiple parties. And keeping organized and on top of those priorities is a key responsibility of all members that are on the committee, in the community, and as part of the municipality. Uh, in terms of, uh, where we are at, uh, you know, undoubtedly COVID-19, the pandemic, has caused increased risk and, and put pressure on our community. And in response to, uh, you know, some issues in our community, council as champions expressed their commitment to community safety and wellbeing planning in a special meeting that was held December 29th, 2022. Uh, council at that meeting rallied for support, uh, from the public and community. And this is, uh, an outcome of those conversations. So the Community Safety Wellbeing Coordinator is responsible for the coordination and management and support of really the plan and the actions that are outlined, uh, by the community and through that committee. Uh, and will work to build relationships and, uh, keep actions moving as, as we move forward. Uh, the key tasks of the coordinator are outlined in the report and the operating budget would really be there to support any activity that is coming out of the committee.
Thank you. Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, not really questions, but just some general comments. Um, not to, to sort of position it as concerns, but, um, when evaluating the job description, thinking about who the target market would be for who this employee will be, I have concerns that the salary range might be too low. Um, I, I'm worried about being able to attract the right kind of professional with the experience that we're seeking, especially in a high-profile position that takes a lot of flak from this community. This person is going to be under a lot of pressure. They're going to be expected to relate with agencies and, and government, different levels of government and at a very high level. And, uh, I have serious concerns that we're maybe, um, shooting ourselves in the foot here and not setting the city up for success by being able to attract and retain, uh, the level of professional that we need, uh, for this type of role. Um, and secondly, in looking at, um, you know, the formation of this committee, a safety committee, the, the All Nations Health Partners has a working group, um, already being established to, that, that works with the stakeholders. So I'm, I'm a bit concerned we're creating another silo unintentionally when the individual that's going to be taking over this role could very well seek appointment to that working group. It'll report back to that board. I'm a member of that board, I can report back to council. And we can eliminate just another committee. We have a, there's, there's a pattern here in our community, for, for better or worse. I mean, people can refer to Canora as Committee City. And I, I don't know that that is necessarily the most efficient way to, to roll out this individual's work by, by getting community members from different agencies that are already sitting on all nations' working groups, uh, to run a committee and participate in a committee off the side of their desk, just another committee. So, uh, those are some of my concerns. Uh, I just want you to take that into consideration, um, and maybe reevaluate, uh, how this person could really effectively and efficiently work in the community. And, and hopefully we can attract somebody that really will be a champion of, of this role for our community. It's very important, we heard that at the public meeting, um, how, how significant it is to, to make sure we're successful in rolling this out. And again, this person's going to be under a lot of pressure. We, we know, uh, how ugly our social media is in this community. We know what people are saying on the streets. We know what visitors are saying and are afraid of. Um, that this person will, uh, will be taking a lot, it's, it's a high-pressure job. And we need to attract somebody who has, uh, not just thick skin, but has significant experience in managing this kind of a role and working with the individuals and groups that they're going to have to work with. So I just wanted to express that to admin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Chase and, uh, Counselor Pendleton?
A lot of my points are just reiterations of Counselor Chase's, so I won't do that. But, um, I do also have hesitations around the salary. Um, and another thing that I thought to think about in this role is that ideally you'd want someone who already has a sort of connection to the community. So they're generally at a, uh, pre-plater stage in their career advancement. And so I, I worry that we're not attracting who our target demographic would be for this role at that, at that wage. Everything else? Counselor Chase was in and I'm sorry, I have a problem.
Uh, can we, because we, we have other, and then we can come back. Because I think it's important we have this discussion. Um, so, uh, Counselor Moncrief, uh, has a question on?
She has, uh, two questions. How many positions on the restructured staffing chart at the non-union level have yet to be filled? And is this a temporary position? If so, the wording doesn't reflect this.
Uh, so the idea was not to have this as a temporary position. This was coming forward as an addition to our staffing complement. So it would be a permanent, um, request, or full-time request that we are making. Um, in terms of the number of positions that are vacant, I will have to get that exact number for you. I don't have that on the, on the top of my, at the fingertips right now, but I will have that before end of meeting today.
Okay. Counselor Koch?
Uh, thank you. I, uh, everybody's on the same wavelength, I think, today. I, I would echo Counselor Chase and Counselor Van Bellingham's concerns about the salary. Thank you for confirming it's a permanent position. Um, I think it's just a language that you said.
Yeah.
And I just, I know Counselor Chase, you said, um, that, that there may be some duplication or, or silos if there's another committee, but I also note that it's in the legislation that there has to be a committee. So, um, that's something we'll just have to navigate.
Counselor Manson?
Well, I want to make sure that we're also very cognizant of our budget when we are looking at the wages for this person. And this person would be on the grid, so there would be increases, right? Okay, I just comment.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, again, without duplicating that, the salary, that's the thing that stuck out to me. And that, just for that type of individual, we, whoever he or she is, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, that cuts it anymore. That's just the reality of the marketplace. Um, and, um, Counselor Koch had brought up where we are mandated to have this. Uh, my only concern about, you know, having other committees there working on behalf of this, which is fine, and, and I think, I believe they can still be used, um, is, you know, the viability of that committee and how they move forward and what they could bring to that, like, to this position. And are they willing to do that? I mean, there, there would have to be insurances and, and I think, um, without discounting the All Nations Health Partners, uh, because I know we're really, uh, sort of holding in on trying to get people to work together, hopefully, instead of working in silos, which is not working in the community right now, and we all know that. So, um, as much as I agree with, if we could have someone else, I think we have to go through this process. And, uh, um, and I think as we're going through the agenda and that, I think, uh, we've had some comments from people about, like, the size of the community and that, which is, in my mind, the way it sits now, problematic, or could be, because I think there's too many people. So, uh, I think we can have that discussion as we sort of flow through the meeting today.
Sure. Just, just follow-up comments and, uh, I mean, again, we're all, we all appear to be on the same web. But thank you, Counselor Koch, for reminding us of the mandate that we're required to have that committee. My, the two, two things that come to mind for me, I mean, we have an allocated, uh, by operating budget for this committee of $75,000. Um, so I mean, I, I don't know that we're going to need that much. Um, obviously it might be a trial and error type of thing, depending on how much work and outreach and what their expenses are going to be. So I, I'm kind of curious as to how admin came up with that operating budget. I, I would hate to set an operating budget of 75, allocate it, and then it just flows to reserves. I mean, I don't want to be building reserves in this, I want it to be used. And, and if we had to lower the operating budget because we're shooting too high, that could easily be flowed into the salary, uh, to offset, uh, other budgetary requirements. Um, and then the only other comment, and this is something I can find out. We have an All Nations Partners meeting today that I'm going to be attending, one of the agenda items, is discussing the working group that they have established. Perhaps there's an opportunity for that working group to come under our, under our umbrella and we can be, you know, to fulfill our mandate requirement and provide, uh, provide something that we can work. So I'll discuss that with the partners, uh, and try to bring some more, more information back to council here and how that's structured. But again, my concern is duplication and multiple committees. It's the same, the, the people serving that committee are the same, it's the same people. So why would they want to sit on two committees? Again, again, a lot of these individuals are, are, are running with very tight budgets, doing this type of work off the side of their desk or on a volunteer basis, or offsetting, uh, their paid time at work to fulfill their programs and services to their clients in order to, to do this committee work. And I just, I want to make sure that, you know, big picture as a, as a whole community, we're, we're being as efficient and on the same page and, and working together, so. Um, so, yeah, thank you for, thank you for the time.
We have one more question, Counselor Moncrief. Where does this position live? Is it an HR position?
Uh, right now, this is, this is not an HR position. Uh, it'll be reporting to the Office of the CAO. And so that will be, uh, definitely at a priority level where it's direct interaction with the CAO and Mayor Council, so that is at your level.
I believe that's in the report.
Yeah.
And I just want to, sorry, just to Counsel change Chase's comments. Uh, even before everything happened in, in December, well, e- even going back, um, we have some committees that are, and this was one of them. How do you, how do you do something, like, I know they're advisory committees, but how do you do something as a committee if you don't have any goals or you don't have any resources? And so even before all this came up, senior leadership and I were having conversations specifically about this committee and specifically about the sustainability committee. Because we've got a sustainability committee, we've got a sustainability action plan, and we got zero bucks. So I had conversations with senior leadership about putting in $75,000. And I'm not going to, that's an arbitrary number. It's not too much, not too little. We're trying to find that, you know, right temperature of oatmeal there from the three bears. Uh, but the point is, is we wanted to be able to make sure that there was something that the committees could have to be able to do things. And it, it does cost money to do things, whether that's, uh, you know, yes, there's some things that we can do, uh, policy changes or things that we can do within existing staffing resources. But when you look at some of the deliverables and, and even if you look at the draft community and wellbeing plan, there's things in there that cost, you have to spend money on to get it done. So I think we are, um, like, yeah, and, and so the point, the point of that was, those were going to be options presented to council to consider at budget time. And if you guys decide that this is an area that you want to, uh, invest in as a council, that's up to you. And at the end of the day, you know, we're talking a lot about the budget. The budget process is trade-offs. Add a project, cut a project. Um, take a little bit more money out of debt? Don't. Um, take a little bit more money out of the bank? Don't. Those are the decisions that you're going to have at the budget table. And so it's really about, um, where, where do you want to put the most focus on? And so, um, $75,000, if you want less, we can put in less, if you want more, we can put in more. Um, we're just, you know, again, this, we were sort of trying to figure out how to prepare for budget in advance of anything that took place over the holidays and in December in the downtown core. And so that speaks to just sort of the logic and some of the thinking that we have on that initial decision. Um, but there's nothing set in stone, uh, and we're happy to listen to council's feedback at the budget table.
Thank you. I'm assuming that answered, uh, Counselor Moncrief's question. Uh, Counselor Koch?
Thank you, two things. Um, is the development of the new plan, is that something that's included in the $75,000 budget?
It is not right now. I can tell you we've had preliminary conversations with.
I thought it is.
The plan is in the budget?
The, the dollar value would be used to support any development or renew of the plan, correct?
Let me rephrase. We could use the $75,000 to work on the plan if we chose to.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I will be honest, my, um, the state of the draft plan is something that I've only really gotten in the last six weeks. So I think, again, when we were thinking about putting money in the operating budget, I didn't necessarily conceive of a new plan at that time. But now that we've had the opportunity to see when the engagement took place, what the draft plan looks like, and understanding that things have changed over the last four years, um, yeah, I think we need to do a new plan. And so we could use that if council wanted to use the money in that way.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And secondly, um, and this might be creeping into the terms of reference discussion, but, um, just to the point of the different committees and duplication and all that, I think the opportunity lives for us to say, what is crime prevention and community wellbeing mean for us? And the things that we can do on that committee that exist outside of the Mental Health and Addictions Working Group that lives at All Nations Health Partners. Um, there will be some overlap, but I think there's bigger work there at, at the Crime Prevention Committee than will live just at the All Nations Group. So something to consider while we're looking at what that committee will, will do. Thank you.
Thank, uh, any other questions? Okay, so, um, so just so everybody's clear in that, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna take a look at the salary. I think there was agreement here that, uh, you're gonna have to look at something. Unless we get awful lucky enough, but I suggest we're not going to, so. Um, so we're gonna have to keep that in mind moving forward. So that'll come back to, uh, council on, like, next week and after approval. So if there's any additional information that you need to add to your recommendation or your report, then to have that completed, please.
Sure, and we can just track changes on that.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Uh, so moving on to item 1.4, uh, amend terms of reference for, for the Crime Prevention and Community Wellbeing Advisory Committee. Uh, and I'm assuming there would be, uh, some discussion here after Heather.
This was the, uh, Mayor Poirier asked for this terms of reference to come forward for council to have initial discussion on, you know, this, this hasn't been looked at since 2021. Uh, we have a new council. Um, and, and this is an area. We have a new council, and, and this is an area of concern and an area, a priority area for council this time. So the intention, obviously, is to appoint the committee members. We have various vacancies on the committee, but prior to advertising for those vacancies, we want to have the discussion around maybe the composure, as well as some of the content of the, you know, terms of reference for the committee overall. Just as a procedural recommendation, I think that this committee, you know, you could have a lot of public interest in this committee, and it might be wise to have some procedural processes included in the terms of reference, which I can add if that is the rule. I didn't get into adding them all in advance, I just wanted to hear the input from council prior to doing that. So really, I'm turning it over to council. Counselor Bernie has provided his comments, just in the event he couldn't connect today, and Mayor Poirier has those comments.
Yeah, so I, I will read those out, but if we want to maybe start on the side of the, if there's any questions, Counselor Chazie?
I want to hear what's, sorry, my question is, I guess, what are our goals for this committee? Like, I think we need definable outcomes to make this successful, and so I think that, I'm sure there'll be part of that in this, but I think that's something that we need to discuss as a, as a council, is crime prevention and community, like, that, what does that mean at, at a tangible level in this community, or what are the outcomes we're hoping to get from this?
Okay, I'm just gonna go around, does Lisa have a question? No?
Nothing.
Don't see anything. Counselor Madison?
Yep. Same thing, I want to know what our outcome should be through the terms of reference, I think it's really important.
I have something, but I'll save it for after.
Okay, do you want me to read what? Well, it may answer some questions, and again, this is Counselor Bernie's suggestion. So what he's saying is limiting the membership to nine, plus one counselor, whoever that may be, for the sake of efficiency and decision-making ability, and I tend to agree with that. And he just lays this out, and again, it's just for discussion, employee of the municipality education sector, so it could be from the college, universities, or the district school board section, whatever, health sector, mental health sector, community and social service sector, children and youth sector, custodial services for children and youth, OPP detachment commander or surrogate, council member would be 10, and then he has asterisks, like, say a member-at-large, and he follows up with, member-at-large should be carefully considered. The role may not be appropriate for this advisory committee, so he's, he's put it out there, but he's not sure if that's what we want to be looking at. He's suggesting wait until February council meeting to recommend amendments to this bylaw in order to allow council to review any proposed changes, and I tend to agree there. If the majority of council are in agreement with the number of members and adopt in terms of reference at this time, I will support the motion. So that's what he left, of course.
Thank you, worshipers, I have a follow-up. I mean, the suggestions of members, I mean, I think cover most of the bases, but in my opinion, and maybe this is not appropriate, but, and I put it to the floor for discussion, or maybe somebody can answer for me, why aren't we considering having somebody from the Ministry of the Attorney General's Office, a Crown, somebody in the justice world? I think that's a very important component that's missing on that list, and, and definitely a sector that we need to engage, because they're part of, not just the solutions, but kind of part of the problems right now, not that, like, we have to be, I know it's tough to hear that and say that, but we have to have honest conversations about this, and we have, I personally have major concerns about how the law is being applied, and we can blame the police, but when individuals are being released with no plans, and, yeah, there's serious flaws in justice that also need to be discussed at this committee level, and without inviting them to be at the table and seeking their participation so that some of their knowledge could come back to our table, so we can be educated on where these gaps are and what we need to advocate for, I think it's something that we need to consider, and again, I will open it to the floor if anybody else has comments or, or anything on that topic.
Counselor Madison?
Graham, I totally agree with that, I think it's imperative that we have somebody from the justice system on this committee. Also, what about somebody from the business sector? Because they've been affected quite a bit by this, so I think you need both sides at the table.
Good. Counselor Koch?
Thank you, I would, I would echo both Counselor Madison and Counselor Chazie's recommendations. I also wondered about including language about the type of representation we're asking for, from each of, sort of, the list of voting members. I think it will be helpful for somebody to, not necessarily a decision-maker at the top level of the organization, but somebody who could commit the organization to whatever task or whatever actionable item would fall under that organization's purview. So not just, not just somebody who will be doing the work, but somebody who can decide that that work will be done.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just gonna step back from the chair here, and I just have a couple of comments. I was going to bring up the fact that, because I've had the opportunity to meet with the executive of the chamber, met last week with him, actually, for about two and a half hours. I updated him on what council was doing to that point, and some of the things we were looking at doing going forward, and they're keen to be part of the solution, too, because they have a stake in all this also. It's not just about, it's about safety in the downtown, and continuing to have businesses operate under safe, safe conditions, so, and, and just from a call or a discussion I had yesterday, just thinking about this, I'm just wondering if we're maybe putting the cart before the horse on this one. I, I know we have to go hire someone, and I think you were, I think that's where you were coming from, and I'm, I'm wondering if we just sort of, we can have this and we can discuss it, like, the makeup, but I would like to see, you know, how we're going about developing the plan, and what's in the plan, because what if we get all this wrong, or we're only representing half of what we need to, or we've got the mix wrong, and I don't know. Maybe it's fine, but I, I'm just wondering if we need time to go in that direction and start developing the plan, and then start looking at that, because I've had lots of calls from people in a lot of these sectors that are willing to be part of this advisory committee or committee, or whatever it's going to be. So I don't think there's going to be, I don't think it's going to be hard to, when we reach out to get people from these, and I would say about 70% of those areas or sectors, I've had at least one, in some cases, two calls from, from organizations or individuals that would be willing to step up, so that was good to hear. You know, as long as we keep the needle moving, I think they're interested. So I, I'm just kind of throwing that out there, you know, that's why we have these discussions at, at the committee level, but I'm just wondering if we start on the recruitment, get that pinned down, and then start on, like, you know, the development of the plan or the revision of the existing plan, whatever we want to call it, and then at some point we can see the, the basis of that plan, and then, you know, we might come back and, and the majority of council may say, this does not, this does not work for what we've developed, or we need to add, or we need to move things around, so I, I'm just kind of throwing that out right now, without stopping the process, because I truly do not want to do that, but maybe we're, you know, maybe we, we need to work from a different vantage point.
Could I speak from an administrative perspective?
Just Counselor Moncrief has one.
Sorry, let her go ahead.
Agree with Counselor Chazie, and the suggestion membership, there's a youth custodial services rep, but not adult. Why is this? Do you want me to answer that? So the development of the initial framework of the committee was really driven by the provincial's frame, provincial framework that was presented, so when Adam did the development of this, this committee, pretty clear on the ministry site, you know, well, what the responsibilities are of the committee, and who those suggested members should be. It says should, not shall, so it does leave that open for councils, you know, discretion, they can decide what type of membership, but they do provide a framework for councils to start with. So that is the reason why that person is there.
Counselor Koch?
Thank you, I would just also offer that I, I feel like adult custodial, it's kind of covered in some of the other representation, and also if we're inviting MAG, I think that kind of covers part of that as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so I just wanted to share sort of my perspective, administration's perspective on this. So there, there's two fundamental issues. How do you set up the city employee to be successful, and how do you set up the committee to be successful? And it's important to know, and the province does this from time to time, you shall do this. There's going to be 400-plus different approaches to this across Ontario, and so they haven't really told us how to do this. They've provided some, you know, some, you know, tracks that we need to kind of remain on, you need to have a committee, these are the types of things you want to focus on, but I think what really concerns me, and I think the challenge that the previous council faced was, how do you develop a plan without a committee, and how, but ultimately, it falls under the city. And so we've been having some conversations with the Crime Prevention Network over the past couple of weeks administratively, and I think, I think, kind of, we need a two-pronged approach. I think the public is expecting city council to do something, but we need to understand that city council's bucket is, has limits. There's some things that we have control over, and there's other things that we don't have control over. So what I would suggest is when we're working on the plan, I think we should really focus, department by department, what we can do that falls within our own bucket. So what can we do in bylaw? What can we do in recreation? What can we do in other areas of the city to be able to advance things forward, because that's what we can control? And, you know, you're going to expect me to hold the coordinator accountable, but what am I holding them accountable to if they're supposed to implement a plan that they don't have control over implementing? So I, I think we need sort of a, part of the strat, and, and sorry, like, we've, coming back to the draft plan, there's 32 action items right now, you know, in the draft, no dedicated staff, and only 14 of them fall in the city's control. So that's not a great place to start. So I think we need sort of, this is what the city is going to do in the plan, and then I think we need to have sort of a smaller level of things that we're going to try and influence through our relationships and through our platform with other community organizations and through the committee. But at the end of the day, even the committee, you know, one person from this organization or one person from business, they're not going to be able to influence anything and actually get anything done without the support of the coordinator and without the support of other people around that table and without resourcing. So my advice would be, the plan needs to have a very specific component that focuses on what falls in the city's bucket and purview, and that we can actually make changes on and invest in, and then a smaller number of things that we're going to try and work on as a community, because otherwise, I think it's going to be very difficult for you to hold me accountable and holding that person accountable on delivering things that they don't have any control over, and that's been the real rub and the real gap, I think, as the previous council and our previous administration has tried to move this forward, because it's going to take, people have said it, I mean, it's going to take a community to resolve some of these issues and to improve some of these issues, and I don't want to artificially inflate expectations in the community about saying, you know, the city's going to do X through this mechanism when we don't have control over that. So as a CIO, as the representative for administration, those are the things that are going through my head as we try and figure out how to move forward, and we had a conversation, like I said, with crime prevention, I said, hey, tell me what the most frequent mistakes you see other municipalities make in this type of work. Tell me, what do municipalities have in common that are really successful in this type of work? You know, it's tough, too, I see municipalities with 200-page, community safety, crime prevention, and wellbeing, 200 pages, I don't know if we need 200 pages. I think we need to look inwards at what can the city do to make this problem better, and how do we want to use the committee? And that's the real challenge, the province hasn't told us, you know, how, how do you hold the committee accountable, and how do you create deliverables that the community can actually deliver on? And that's actually, I think, a pretty tough challenge, and we need to try and figure out how to get through it. We'll continue to have conversations on the administrative side, but I wanted to share you my perspective, because when Roberta and I sat down, and, you know, we were debriefing on the December 29th meeting, and we were trying to figure out, well, how do you put up a, a job description, and the, the initial draft was sort of, they'll support the committee these ways, but they weren't really, it was about the committee more than the city, and that's, there's an imbalance there. So we need to figure out how to strike that balance between moving things forward for the city and providing support to this committee and to the individuals around the table to be able to deliver on the goals that we agree on, and so I don't know how to agree on goals as a committee when we don't even know who's at the committee table. So I hope that's helpful, I know I'm sort of, you know, it's a lot of words coming out, but that's sort of going on in my mind, is we're trying to figure out how to make this successful, because you, it's not going to be successful if we don't clearly articulate what the expectations are and what we're expecting from this person and from the committee, and, you know, I think the joint priority setting, that's, you can reflect on what I just shared, and I think we'll have an opportunity to talk about this during our priority-setting conversation, and I hope that, I hope that helps you frame your thoughts for how you want to show up, you know, in future discussions around these issues, because it is going to take some work and some real thought and focus to, to make sure that we maximize the success of this position and this committee.
Do you have a question, Counselor?
Okay, I'm gonna, this is not my area of expertise, right? I'm a banker or whatever, so, but I, I think, going back to putting the cart before the horse, having that person in place and developing the plan feels like the steps that should be the starting point, because I don't understand how we give a committee procedural bylaws if we don't understand what our deliverables are, and I think that we're going to get into a 32 list with 14 of the, if we don't do that process of making sure that we have an understanding of what our goal is at the end of this, because what does safety mean? You can ask me, you can ask Counselor Chazie, you can ask Counselor Koch, Counselor Madison, and we're all going to give you different answers to that question, and we need to figure that out as a community, is what are deliverable actimal items that we are hoping to attain? And part of this will include advocacy, because I know that everyone knows these are bigger issues than, than the city of Ponor, than the city of, of any municipality, these are much bigger issues, these are systemic issues, and we as a council can get much, much better at advocacy and making sure that we are being clear as to the systemic inequities and issues that we're facing as a community that are directly impacting our city. We, we, we understand that. So there are bigger pieces to this that are outside of our jurisdiction, but we don't, I mean, I don't, maybe, maybe I've missed something, but I don't feel that we've done the step of what are our goals as to what safety and crime prevention means, so, and that may just be my complete ignorance of this process of being the person on the block.
Counselor Madison, and then Counselor Chazie?
Maybe I'm looking at it a little differently, I understand what you're saying, Kyle, but shouldn't this position also be a champion for the community, to pull the community together so that at the table we all can come with different solutions?
Yeah, and I don't think that anything that I, I don't believe that anything that I said necessarily doesn't allow for that possibility, it's, it's just...
Because I think our city is looking for a champion.
Yes, absolutely, and they should be a champion, but, but they, talk is one thing, and so champion is one thing, but at the end of the day, the public is looking for results, and I'm just telling you, you, you can see how you can create a situation where it's hard to get results, and I even think about, you know, we've had the Trails Committee referenced here. Great, we've got a Trails Advisory Committee with no budget, they, they can't do anything, they can't tell us what to do, and that's frustrating when you're sitting there as a Trails Committee member. So I'm also trying to think about what the future members on this committee are, and we're going to have people that are going to volunteer time away from their families and their job to contribute, and they want to be part of the solution, and if they don't see them, if they don't see wins, and they don't see themselves as being part of the solution, that's going to become frustrating, and we're going to be right back where we started.
I think it's really important, we have to have wins.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, so I'm just, I, I don't have it all figured out either to Counselor Van Veleenham's point, I'm just trying to share the real, some of the real obstacles that I see in place to making this successful, and, and, and of course, the challenge is, it's going to take some time, and we all know the urgency, that we all feel individually and... And we all know the urgency that we all feel individually in our roles, that we feel from the community. It's powerful. You feel it, right? And so we want to move quickly, but we also want to get it right. Mr. Chair, I think Roberta has.
Yeah, I, I think it's really important that we understand the accountability and authority that this role will have. Uh, you know, we, we have to understand that the buckets that they are dealing with, even within the municipality, come under, uh, other types of authorities, including council decision. So when we take a look at, um, the expectations of this individual, uh, we really need to be mindful, uh, you know, especially when we talk about champion. Is that word, is that word the right placement on this individual? Are we all champions in terms of what actually has to come forward? And how does this individual feed up into that? So, you know, when we think about someone coming in, as we spoke about before, that is, that, those, the, um, the opportunity for success has to be attainable for someone to actually step into those types of roles. And I think that these are really complex issues. There's multiple facets to those issues. There's multiple levels of authority and decision-making that do not fall to any one administration individual, uh, to actually move forward and, and make a change, uh, that we may need. Um, and I think it's important to recognize that the legislation, um, and the, the format of, uh, what the province had laid out, doesn't speak to one coordinator. It actually has contemplated coordinators, um, meaning that, um, our other stakeholders that are key, are participants in the safety and health of the community, may also choose, uh, to invest in a coordinator of their own to work and help continue advance the legwork that actually has to happen behind those committees and investing that focus. So, um, those are all the contemplations when we talk about a position and we think about, you know, uh, how will we present it to an individual? How do we make this job something someone can wrap their arms around and actually, uh, make a difference? Because we want success in our community, but that individual is going to want success as well.
So, uh, I'm just going to step back from the chair. Again, I, I, I'm wondering if we're, we're, uh, we're trying to make this more. I, I know it's a complex issue, but we're, it almost sounds like we're complicating things here. Um, we're, uh, we're, we're going to decide today to move forward in the, like, recommending council, uh, the position. But when I look at the position and that, I, I look at, yes, it's under the auspices of the city. I see very limited, um, things happening through the city. Uh, what I do, uh, the, and that's why it's key to getting the right person, that this person is going to be, uh, and I don't use champion or whatever. I use, he, he or she is going to be a conduit into politicians' ears and whether it's at whatever level. Um, and being able to build that network where they can pick up the phone and phone this ministry, that person, that staffer. I mean, that's going to be the big challenge of this new position. Um, cause we're not going to solve the problems at this table. I mean, we, we have to be realistic. But it's, it's how we can advocate on behalf of some of these other organizations that aren't, that aren't doing the job right now. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I, they're working hard, but it's not getting done because they're out and about doing things on their own. And that does not work. It doesn't work in any situation. So, like, to me, that's, that's the biggest piece. And I know we're talking about how to deliver, and that's going to be very difficult. Not because you can make a call and you might not have any action for six months, and then all of a sudden you have action. That's how government works, especially at the upper levels. So, um, I, I, I just wonder if we're, almost like when we're talking about setting it up for failure. And that, like, I think there's other models out there. Let's not try and reinvent the wheel all the time. There's other models out there. There's many other communities, uh, cause I've spoke to some mayors, that have these in place. And, and yes, they're a lot more cumbersome than what we'd be looking at. We don't need a 200-page plan. But I, 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 I think if we have those discussions and outreach and, and move this forward, and it's going to be step by step by step by step. Let's hire someone. Let's start that process. Then let's start looking at what a plan may look at. And it might be 12 drafts before we get it right. I don't know, but we have to get it right. Uh, and the eyes and the ears of the community are, uh, upon us now because we set ourselves up for that, right, in that meeting? Um, but it's important that we move forward that way. So, um, I just, like, you know, there's going to be bumps along the way. This is not going to be a smooth process. And I think we just start and start working towards it. And if we have regular updates, we will have more to say about what the process, what the plan looks like, and then ultimately what a committee structure would look like. It's, uh, I don't, I just, I'm sorry, but just, maybe I'm naive enough for being around this chamber for so many years. We always make things so bloody complicated and we're trying to solve something, uh, because we think, I guess, that's what we have to do. And I think that's the way we're going here. And not like, we're way beyond our discussion today about where we're even at. And I think we need more data, more information in front of us, then we can have that discussion. My opinion. Thank you.
I guess all that I would say, Mr. Chair, is the, the comments that I'm sharing are actually meant to simplify. I, I actually think part of the reason that this hasn't been successful yet is because it's been complicated. And it's only through clear expectations that we can actually simplify the process. I don't, look, we can hire a person, we could start working on the plan. I'm not suggesting that we need to hold up or anything like that. We just need to, um, be conscious as we hit each step of the path at work.
Um, can I just ask councillor Moncrief to try one more time? Okay, I thought maybe I get her. So she did make a comment. Can those be done in parallel? And I believe that was back when Kyle was speaking.
Can the plan and the hiring be done in parallel?
Did you mean the plan and the hiring, councillor Moncrief? Uh, she's going to type. Thought maybe if I reset it. We'll reset when we go into closed and hopefully that will work.
Okay.
It's okay, she said.
Yeah, okay. Anyways, let's, I think we've, uh, we've had a thorough discussion on that item, so.
So I'm just not clear where, are, are we making any amendments? Or are we just tabling this until February? Just not clear where we're going with this one.
Well, I mean, man.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I don't want to table it to February. I mean, I, I don't know what salary range to suggest. I would, you know, default to Roberta's expertise. And again, evaluating the type of professional that we're looking to recruit, type of experience that we're looking for, I think is a bit higher level than where the salary range is. So, um, I'm glad that we've had this wholesome discussion. But I think it's, it's really setting us up for hopefully some success here. But I think, I think whoever ends up, the individual bring, coming to the table will obviously probably come with, um, a certain level of expertise. Um, and probably a, a version of their own plan as well that they can contribute and make sure that they're successful in this role. So, um, so anyway, I just, that, that was my only comment. Um, I, I don't want to delay for the sake of delaying. I mean, if we can revise, if you've already got a scale that you can propose, I don't know if this is 100-plus, whatever. Uh, I think you can tell the commitment the city wants to make in terms of council and mayor that we, we want to make an investment in hiring the right person and attracting somebody who's really going to succeed here. So, and bringing significant experience to the table. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Chase. But I, I think what the clerk was referring to was, uh, I think 1.3 we decided that we'll come forth next time. They're going to take a look at the salary range. Uh, it was 1.4 she was referring to, which was the advisory, or makeup of the advisory committee. Is that something?
I think we should table that.
That we'll table for the time being and, uh, revisit it once we get further involved in the process? Is that fair to say?
Okay, so procedurally, just so council, um, understands, it will still come before you because it's a committee whole report. It'll still come before you as a resolution at, uh, next week's meeting. And there will be, uh, the need for an introduction of a deferral to February by committee. Just so you're wondering why it's there.
Okay, everybody, okay. Thank you.
Uh, okay, moving on the agenda, item number three, engineering infrastructure. Uh, 3.1, Drinking Water Quality Management System Regulatory Approval. And I guess that's your report, Michael?
Primarily, it's just a housekeeping issue where we need some signatures on element three of the Drinking Water Quality Management Standard Plan to satisfy the provincial requirements in the Safe Drinking Water Act. So this is done on an annual basis where the plan gets reviewed, updated, and, uh, I guess signed off, uh, per element three of that plan by the mayor, uh, and upper administration and those working on the plan.
Okay. Uh, any questions of council?
I think it's.
It was long. It was long. Yeah, councillor Clutch.
I don't have any questions. In fact, I just wanted to comment how much I appreciated the many pages that was this report. Um, I found myself going, oh, I wonder this. And then a few pages later, the question was answered. So I just really appreciated, um, all the risk mitigation information that was in there and, and all the sort of backup plans for backup plans that was incorporated into that, really.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure council was aware of the plan itself. That's why that attachment came with it. It wasn't just, oh, we signed this and you don't know what you're signing. So I wanted to provide some context and some information, I guess, you know, on, on how intricate and detailed the plans that, that are worked on here and are in place for drinking water safety.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Any other questions at council? Okay, thank you.
So that'll come forth, uh, council next week. Uh, 3.2, uh, food cycler, household organic waste diversion, phase two budget commitment.
Yeah, I'll deliver this report really quick, Mr. Chair. So I'm not going to belabor all the point in the report. You've had an opportunity to review it. I think, uh, high level, um, council made an investment during the previous term in the food cycler technology. Uh, it was very successful. We sold out the units in sick days. We've had a lot of, um, you know, anecdotally, we've had a lot of requests for more uptake on the program. So I think the, the details that are most important is, um, we're looking for, because we don't have a budget right now, we're looking for $84,750 today. And predominantly that's to cash flow. And the, the reason of the urgency is, um, there's a January 31st date to get into this subsidized funding, a great, uh, agreement that, uh, Impact Canada Food Waste Reduction Challenge, that partnership with Food Cycle Science Corporation. That's the urgency and why we're not waiting for budget. Cause if we don't get in on January 31st, uh, we can't get the subsidized rate. So even though it's going to be $84,750, at the end of the day, it's only going to, our net cost will be $28,500 when we sell all the units, which we anticipate we will do. And, uh, for, that's for option one. And, um, there's some money coming out of the Bearwise Reserve, and then there's a little bit coming out of Solid Waste Reserve, but, but nothing that's going to impact operating there. We've created a couple of extra options there for you, um, just to add in an extra $5,000 or $10,000 for accessories because they do get to a point where the charcoal is worn and you need to replace the filters or if you need a new basket. So we're giving council the option to purchase some additional accessories that people could purchase here rather than having to go through Food Cycle or Amazon or whatever. Um, but, uh, the base, uh, program that we are recommending today is, uh, $84,750, which will net to $28,500, um, once all the units are sold. And then, like I said, um, just a couple accessory add-ons if council wishes to go that route. But that's really the high-level information you need to know.
Okay, councillor Van Bellingham.
Thank you again for another full sum report. Do we have any discretion when it comes to the model type quantities? Is it set?
Um, it's, it's set by the, by the program offering and by Food Cycle Science Corporation.
And my, sorry, if I may, um, I understand you just need the, um, for the $84,750, my recommendation would be the $10,000 towards the additional. As someone who has one in their house, the, based on the costing that you have in here, this is more cost-effective than purchasing through Amazon or Food Cycler. And this is, um, it gets very stinky if you do not, um, keep the filters updated. The other thing that I was, um, would, that would like to push back on Food Cycler is that this is a great program in creating, in reducing food waste, but those filters are very wasteful. Um, and this is something that has been brought up to Food Cycler before, but them looking at a program where they take the, or I don't know if we could do that. I'm talking about the side of the, at the municipality like, that level, of taking the filters back and finding a way of disposing those in a more efficient manner, I think would be something worth considering as well.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't have, um, an answer today on the filter disposal, but I could certainly have that conversation with Marco and Makesh, our manager in the area. And I'm sure we could at least look into something.
Any other questions at council? Lisa doesn't have anything typed up there.
No.
Okay. Um, okay, so that'll come forward.
Could I just get clarity? Um, I know councillor Van Bellingham mentioned, and she is correct. Um, it is, it would be more cheaper to, uh, our residents to buy, um, replacement items through the city. There is a, they are reduced here, um, as opposed to what you would get in the market. Uh, so that's really the question I'm looking for. Do you want to do the accessories as well? What, I will say that, um, the accessories cannot be returned. So if we didn't sell them, we would be stuck with them. Um, but given the uptake that we've had and the number of units in the city, you know, we're fairly optimistic. We could probably get rid of those.
Back to council.
I'm fine.
Councillor Van Bellingham.
Uh, do we have discretion as to what accessories? Cause it said buckets and filters. I would focus more of the budget on the filters, like using the, but I, when did this program come up? We haven't replaced our bucket, I guess, since it came out and we purchased it. It's not pretty by any means, but it's fairly, it seems durable. And that would be where I would put more money for the bucket.
Yeah, you know, there was a list, councillor Van Bellingham, of accessories available. And I thought, administrator, if you guys sort of gave us a budget, we would. But that's sort of where we're leaning, is we focus more on the filters. Um, maybe have a couple buckets and just sort of see how it goes, but.
And I just had one comment to this. Um, so just for council to keep in mind, um, supporting the program overall, there's an intent behind the reason why you support the program, which is to reduce, um, you know, addition into our landfill. Supporting, um, the filters is, is now supporting a certain number of residents. And it's not a broad-based support. So it's only supporting with tax dollars, uh, the 250 people that own those food cyclers. So it's just something to think about. Um, the 250 to add, or the food cyclers to add, has intent, which is to reduce to our landfill. Uh, supporting the filters is, is taking tax dollars and supporting just those 250 residents. So just to separate the two issues, that's all.
Okay, councillor Clutch.
Well, I would actually say the filters do support the whole because if people are stopping use of their machine, throwing it in the landfill because it smells bad, perhaps that's, anyway. I think it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, frankly. Uh, and I would also support the $10,000.
Okay, um, so I think we have.
Yes, so the resolutional change, um, that's there now to incorporate the, uh, support of the filters.
Yeah, and I, I just want to confirm though that we, we, it's not actually where the taxpayer is subsidizing this because someone would come in here and purchase a filter or.
Not from, yeah, not from us directly. If we didn't support this, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it, I mean, at some point now, we're going to get our money back on the, on the inventory amount. So I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you okay then?
Yep, I'm good. I'll amend the resolution.
Good. Uh, item number four, community services, uh, no, no reports. Item number five, development services, no reports. Uh, proclamations, I actually have one. Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and, uh, we had the opportunity to, um, be part of a flag raising about a week, uh, week, week and a bit ago, week and a half ago. Um, so the flag is up, flying in front of City Hall for the month of January. Uh, proclamation, by virtue of authority vested in me, I hereby proclaim January 2023 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in and for the city of Kenora and request its observance as such by our citizens. Proclaimed at the city of Kenora this 11th day of January 2023, is worship, Mayor Andrew Poirier. Uh, next meeting, uh, so now we're on the Wednesday circuit and we'll, we'll try that and see how this works. Uh, it'll be Wednesday, February 8th, uh, 2023. There's a motion to adjourn to close meeting. Uh, can I have that read, please?
Thank you, your worship. I move this motion, this resolution, seconded by councillor Van Bellingham. That pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, authorization is hereby given to committee to move into a closed session at 11:08 a.m. to discuss items pertaining to the following. Uh, item one, education and training members of council. Number two, labor relations. Number three, personal matter about an identifiable individual. And number four, disposition of land.
Thank you. Uh, call the vote. Hold a favor? Carried. Okay, um, can we?
Yes, so we're good.
We are back.
Okay, well, welcome back to the public session. So we're just looking for any, any reports that have to become public. So there should be.
From the closed session.
Yeah, so there should be. Is there another motion?
Just one report and Counselor Koch will report on that.
Thank you for your worship. The report coming out of our closed session today is to appoint two members to the Accessibility Advisory Committee, Heather Bird and Corey Neufeld.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it, we adjourned at 2:52.
2:52.
Oh, we're on time.
No, actually it was early today.